Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call this council meeting to order. Will you all please rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to do a roll call here. Councilman Owen.
Present.
Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Thank you. I see where you're online. Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca.
Present.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, for being here. Before we move on to the agenda, we had, we had a Fourth of July celebration, the first official one in two years. And so while I have a crowd here, I want to acknowledge the people who actually made that a success. And so have a little list, and I'll read through it as quickly as possible. First off, I want to thank our staff, so the Fire Department, the Police Department. You always go above and beyond to keep our streets safe and to help prepare for the parade, and that is greatly appreciated. And it's wonderful knowledge, especially when we are living in a day and age where things are not the norm. So, thank you for that. I also want to thank especially our Streets Department and City of Burlington, who loaned us their street sweeper, since I was not here yet, the other one's broken. The Lions Club, who put the parade together, and in particular Rose Torset, Carol Torset, and Joe and Naomi Burns. The Lager Rodeo Board, with much gratitude to Dottie Chandler, Paul Chandler, Tanya Smiley, Jim McMillan, Bonnie Irish, and Bobby and Lisa Cassilia, and I apologize, Bobby. Also to the Chamber, who organized the concert for the fireworks. The Rotary, who put together another well-attended and successful footrace. To the Cedar Woolley Riding Club for the rodeo, which broke records this year as far as attendance and, and the amount of funds that they actually raised. To the other myriad of volunteers. In fact, our own Councilwoman Kestie was one of the parade judges. Because if we didn't have these volunteers, we couldn't make this happen. And it is a, it is a celebration that requires a lot of people, not just a few organizations to make it happen. It does take a village, and it's extraordinary how many people whom I don't even have on the list, and some of them I don't even know, who participated in making this a success. So, thank you. And I believe that's all I have. So, I'm going to move forward now with the consent agenda. Well, approval of the agenda. Do we have an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion. May I make a motion to approve the agenda?
All right. So, I have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Owen. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, consent agenda. Same.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Excellent. Okay. Well, this has really been an extraordinary summer. We've had promotions that have happened and retirements that are happening. So, if I could get Heather Sorstall to come forward, that would be great.
All right. So, Heather, people raise your hands if you'd be sharing. I, Heather Sorstall.
I, Heather Sorstall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And I will do to the best of my judgment.
And I will do to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, and impartially.
Truly, faithfully, and impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of police lieutenant.
Of police lieutenant.
In and for the city of Cedar Woolley.
In and for the city of Cedar Woolley.
Skagit County, Washington.
Skagit County, Washington.
As such are the duties prescribed by law.
As such are the duties prescribed by law.
So.
So.
We are excited. This is the first time that we have had a woman, I shouldn't even have to say this, but that we have a woman who was our lieutenant, and Heather, it's so exciting to have you on board. We're looking forward to working with you. Can we give her a round of applause?
Everybody's leaving.
I know. Yeah. Always so disappointing, isn't it? We have a crowd, and then they're gone. So, moving on to the City Administrator Report. Charlie.
Thank you. And I know Chief Tucker's going to have a report here in a minute, but he's busy. So, I'm going to go ahead and jump into my piece, and then we'll come back to him. So, the item I put on there for tonight is re-encapsulating the, to the best of our ability, the discussion the council had on strategic planning at the last meeting. We put a document together. It's a working draft, so it's, it's sort of beyond a draft. It's a work in progress. So, we've got the vision statement, the mission statement there. What we're really looking to do is, as we put the city's budget together over the next sixty-eight weeks, we want to dial in the council's goals as best we can, and then we're attaching action items to those, and we're going to add more stuff. There's more stuff that all the departments are doing that are related to these. But what we really wanted to do tonight was just make sure we get the wording right on the high-level goals. So, for example, there was a big discussion about parks and recreation, and I interpreted that as you were talking about tourism, related to parks and recreation, specifically trying to get more usage, more people into your parks. And you talked about sports tournaments. You talked about a variety of things to try to do that. Better marketing on the website, better brochures, all types, things like that. So, what I wrote here essentially is increase parks and recreation tourism usage. Just trying to get it real succinct, and then it's something that we can potentially measure. And then we're trying to add some smart goals and action items down below there. So, you know, how soon we would update the city's website, and working with the Chamber of Commerce, which was something that came up in conversation as well. So, I really want to get the council's feedback on all three of these at the high level. And if you're generally okay with the direction we're headed, and then we would build this out more, bring it back in August, refine it with you, and then hopefully the last meeting in August, get to a point where we're pretty solid with what's there. And then we would report back to you throughout the year, as we get into twenty-three and twenty-four in progress on these items.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Charlie. Charlie, would it be all right to label that more so Parks and Recreation for Residential and Tourism Use? Because a big part of that was about the residents being able to have easy access to understand what's going on, what parks they can use, easy reservations, because ultimately it's theirs, as well as, as well as offering it to people visiting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's exactly what I need.
Thank you. Yes. And then I had a couple that just kind of spoke to me, hiring a consultant and/or develop new partnerships. I got the partnership part, but not the hiring of a consultant. So, I, because I wasn't for hiring extra people. I didn't know. And then also with this, continue the city growth model, and update the zoning regulations. So, how it said more high-density, I, I don't know, maybe I just heard it wrong, but I didn't think that we wanted more high-density with more buildings that had the commercial on the bottom and the apartments on the top. So, I kind of would like to hear more on where we were going with that, because I was confused by that part. And you answered the other one from Nick, so those are mine.
Yeah, the thing, I'll just really quickly explain the thinking on the consultant, and it doesn't have to be that. And certainly partnerships, we a hundred percent think are critical. There was a conversation about sports tournaments and trying to bring more sports tournaments to Cedar Woolley, and how much effort those take. And part of the thought was, if we had a partner that could help us put those on that was expert in actually executing those, that would be very helpful, because we don't have the staff that, as we talked about, as you talked about, to really support those kinds of efforts. And it sounded as if there was interest on behalf of the council in having more of those types of events in and around the community. So, that was the thinking behind it. It could take many forms. It might be a partnership, and the city has some ARPA money. We might be able to help put into a partnership to get it going. That partnership may or may not have staff. It may have lone staff. Who knows? But there are some organizations in the region that are already dabbling in this area. United General Hospital comes to mind of at least doing things like Truck for Treasure and outdoor events and getting people more engaged in what's here. And that could potentially morph into some other types of things that could expand out. So, that's really what I meant by it. It wasn't a very, like, specific, we're going to just do this, because we don't know yet. We need to start talking to people. So, I can strike the consulting piece, but we would definitely need some resources to help us.
Okay, Charlie, Mayor just talked about Fourth of July volunteer organizations, volunteer organizations. We have youth group supporters. We have a lot of that. I can understand the city may be contributing to their budgets or whatever, but I don't think we need to take over things. If it, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the recommendation would be to leverage everything that's going on here, try to increase it, and try to get more people engaged, but also to sustain it, to find ways to do that. One of the things that, that we talked about a little bit internally is, when we do think about trying to get these kinds of activities going and bringing people to Cedar Woolley, we're pretty limited on hotel rooms. And that limitation on hotel rooms makes it more difficult for us to realize, like, hotel motel revenues as a result of the activities that actually would occur here. The, the strategy is, we get some events going, we build on these events, we continue to bring people in. It's eventually going to create a market for hotels. And a lot of communities do that. And initially, yes, it's going to benefit some of our neighboring communities, but ultimately, we'll see increased hotel motel revenues. And as we see that occur, we'll be in a better position than to actually take some of that money and feed, support, continue to sustain the efforts that are ongoing. And that often takes the form of community grants, nonprofits, and other things. So, it's just sort of building up the entire system, but trying to get it to a more sustainable place.
But, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So, I see Sarah shaking her head, yes, agreeing. Is the council wanting this to stay on, or you want us to strike it, and it'd be something we would address later? What are your thoughts on that?
I, I personally would like to see, are you talking the consultant?
Right.
I would like to see the consultant stay on. I know that sometimes, we, we talked about a director position. That's a full-time position of an annual cost ongoing. A consultant, you can hire for a little bit, or you can hire quarterly, annually, whatever. I would also venture to, to think, even getting a, a cost analysis of what that would look like, getting one for a start, and then a biannual conference with them or something, and then seeing if we can incorporate upriver more so with Lyman, Hamilton, Burgeview Concrete, and seeing if we can coordinate something, working with them, rather than going more towards Burlington and Mount Vernon and stuff like that, if that's possible. Because there's, there's opportunity, a lot more opportunity there for them to want to see growth within their areas, I believe.
So, so if you can provide clarification for Charlie?
Consultant, cost analysis, or at least a quote to see what maybe three, four would cost, and then a better understanding for the council on what a consultant does and a timeframe that they would be working in. Obviously, they usually work within a week to two-week timeframe, come and do an analysis of your area, provide a report, and then they're out. So, I'm not sure what that would cost them.
Okay. Is the rest of the council okay with that?
Yeah. Good with that.
Exploring it, just exploring it. Yes.
I'd be willing to just take a look and explore it, but not put all my eggs in that basket.
Okay.
I'm Mayor Julie. I'm kind of the same way. You know, I don't want Cedar Woolley to try to become what it isn't.
Okay.
And what it is, is working, and, you know, that's just my spin, you know, but I'm only one out of seven, so it doesn't matter.
Okay. So, I'll just go down the line here. How about you, Councilmembers?
I'm good with checking it out. I know that sometimes just literally hiring them for a very small thing, specific event, or maybe something more broadly later on, but I have no problem with looking at it and seeing what the cost would be.
Okay. How about you, Councilwoman Diamond?
I have no problem with looking into what the cost could be. I quite honestly don't necessarily, I mean, we can look at, look at the pros and cons of it, we get that cost analysis, but I'm more of a hand-on in that, in that sense, and kind of would look to the Parks and Recs Committee or, or some other people that would be willing to work together to find a list and go out and reach out to those people personally, the head of the organizations, and bring them in and let them know what we have. More of that hometown feel, you know, making those contacts and, and not having to utilize any budgets, because right now our budgets are very tight. It's only going to get worse with inflation and everything else that's going on. And so, if we can be smart about it, yes, it might cost a little bit of our time for people that might want to be involved in that. But I, I see no problem with, with getting a, a cost analysis and further discussing that. But right now, I would have to say that I would, I would probably be against it overall.
Oh, you would be against it, okay. But okay with exploring?
I'm okay with exploring it, but I would prefer, I would, I would prefer to, to see us reach out more on a personal level to the local organizations and communities. I, I know that there's people here that have lists of, of these organizations and, and could personally talk to them and find out what we would need to do in order to make something happen.
All right. Thank you. How about you, Councilman Owen? What do you think?
I kind of agree with Councilman Diamond.
Okay.
You know, I mean, what are we talking? How much money are you talking?
Yeah, we, yeah, we don't know yet, and that's what we're being asked to explore.
I wouldn't make any decisions until I found out the cost.
Okay, very good. How about you, Councilman McGoffin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the woman Diamond stated it really well. I like to see the cost analysis, and I also think the Parks and Rec Committee could help direct some of that. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Okay. So.
That's helpful.
That's helpful. Okay. And there was something else that you brought up. You were talking about density. So, you want rewording, or what is it? Tell us what, what it is you're thinking here, Councilwoman Kestie.
Here, just one second. Okay. Let's see. Future growth. So, it said, accommodating higher density in commercial zones where commercial is the primary use on the main floor and urban growth area expansion as necessary. So, I just, I just thought that as we were talking, we weren't talking about, like, packing in high-density apartments and things such as that, or like where the bottom is the business and the top is the five-story apartments, but more some of the R5s, some of the places that these executives in these different places at Janice Key would want to come and buy their homes. So, I was, when I saw the high-density, I thought, oh, I didn't think that that was the route that we were going. So, that was my only concern, seeing it in there.
Okay. Are there other comments regarding that, Councilman Lavaca?
Yeah, I felt the same way. I thought that the discussion was about spreading north and looking into annex solutions, as well as having mainly R5s with R15s integrated within, as we already have within the city already, not densifying the city or not, or creating a larger urban zone before we even know the need for that. So, I, I thought that was the end result of that conversation.
Okay. How about you, Councilman Allen? Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, I think my feelings are the same as Nick's and Julie's.
All right.
You know, as far as just cramming people in for the sake is not my cup of tea.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Burns?
I think Nick said it nicely. That's basically what my understanding was. I like the idea of maybe putting those fourplexes or a small apartment building along with neighborhoods so that you don't have huge apartment blocks or areas like that. That's what I kind of gathered from our conversations.
Okay. Very good.
I'm in agreeance with all of it, and I believe we kind of had, had talked about a possible cap of apartment com, availability as well. We kind of talked about smaller, smaller zones, excuse me, duplex, fourplex, and the possibility of small apartment complexes in the, in the realm of, you know, sixteen, eighteen units per structure and not, you know, sixty-five.
Councilman Owen?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
I just, I think, when you, when you have units like, I'm terrible at McDonald's. I mean, there's a lot, I don't know how many units is in that, that, that structure, but you've got something that being in, in each apartment, it's allowed two cars. That's a lot of cars. And I think if anybody's going to build something like that, then they should have to build a parking garage.
Okay.
And not scatter their cars all over season.
Okay. So, you'd like to see parking garage. Councilman McGoffin?
Um, I see the other council members' points, and I, I agree with them. I'd only just like to add that the housing crisis also happens when you have a lack of a certain type of housing. So, I think we need to be cognizant that we do build enough apartments. And I think with the mixed-use overlay, we're gaining a substantial amount. So, I'm in line with everyone else that I think, that's where I'd like to see the growth. I think that the mixed-use overlay will provide a lot of those apartments for that level of housing. So, I'd like to see how that works before we push that model.
All right. Very good. Thank you. So, I'm going to ask Director Coleman to kind of speak to this. If you would, maybe educate us on what the council is looking at and what that would entail if we moved in that direction, where are our obligations with the GMA and our comprehensive plan and all of that?
All right. Thank you. So, first, the, the way this, the way this goal starts out is to continue the city's growth model, where lots on the edge of town are primarily zoned, single-family. So, that, that's, that's the concept of we continue that single-family on the periphery of town, as the council had talked about. And then it continues with missing middle housing interspersed in the primarily single-family residential zones. So, that was the, the smaller apartments, the duplexes, the triplexes. I don't know if capped is the right word, but, you know, put limits on how much, right now, like, for example, in the R7 zone, we, we have limits on the number of duplexes by saying you can't have, you can't have duplexes next to each other. Unless, you know, there's caveats, of course, but you, we don't want, like, a row of duplexes, like, certain roads that turns out to be not a great, a great neighborhood. So, that's what we're envisioning with this, and that's what the council talked at length about. And then future growth, I think this, this second sentence could probably have been fleshed out a little better. I think what we should say, future growth, well, you will continue the, the single-family lots, because I, now, looking back on it, maybe it does kind of ignore the, the fact that most of our growth is going to be single-family. But then, it also, the sentence also points out that there's other types of housing that were, that the council is, wanted to also keep in there. And we're also trying to accommodate the Growth Management Act, which, you know, we can't just, we would be hard pressed to say, we just want everything to be single-family. That's, that's really just not going to fly. We'll get challenged on that. And so, trying to, trying to, and to say that, you know, we're still going to allow different types of housing in this goal, and it kind of comes off a little strong, as saying, like, this is the direction that we're going. But I think we can massage this around to say, you know, continued our traditional single-family while also accommodating future growth through a combination of infill of the existing residential neighborhoods, continuing to accommodate the higher densities. It's, this, this does, I, I agree, kind of sound like we were, we're going to be pushing for more intense residential development in our, in our commercial areas. So, maybe we can reward that to say, you know, continue to allow higher-density residential uses in our commercial use, in our commercial areas. That way, we're, we're tipping our hat to the fact that the council knows that we need to allow some of that, and there are positive benefits to that, as far as the city accommodating different types of housing, but not necessarily saying that's where we're going with even a large part of our growth. But we do want to continue to allow some of it. And then, and then I definitely wanted to get, you know, the council clearly had stated in the, the work session that you were leaning towards urban growth area expansion as our way of continuing, as our way of addressing future growth. So, that's why that is also prominently listed in this. So, I don't have, I haven't thought out a, a sentence that I could lay this out in, but I, does, does that explanation seem like, more like what the council was trying to say? You know, it's very long-winded, and we're trying to get it into one sentence or two sentences. And, well, we can continue to work on that if that sounds like what you're.
I think it does. I, I was thinking the template that we have right now within each ward, which appears to have residential homes, single-family homes, as well as mixed units. So, there's duplexes, fourplexes apartments in each zone. And so, you were kind of saying with our urban growth requirements from the state, that was kind of fitting that already. They might ask for a little more, but that template, as we expand that urban growth zone, I guess. And so, and that was heading towards the north end, I believe, is what we kind of were discussing on that. So, we do have apartments in each zone, is right, and small units in each zone, or each ward?
Well, I, you know, to the north of Highway twenty, I'm not sure if we have any apartments in the R5 zone.
No.
Well, years south of Highway twenty, north of Highway twenty, I, actually, there's some.
She's north.
Actually, there are, there are some, there are some apartments over off of SAP Road.
Yeah.
In that area.
Yeah.
So, there are some existing interspersed in that area.
Yeah.
And, you know, our, our vision would not be allowed, would not to allow quite so much as, as along SAP Road. And trying to keep those sorts of, you know, that higher density in the R15 zone, which is an existing, our, our existing zone that we have throughout town, and those are getting, the R15s getting pretty full. So, we would concentrate those larger apartments in the R15 zone, like we have in the past, allow an interspersing of smaller apartments in the R5 and R7 zone, and currently. apartments and townhouses and any, anything over single-family and duplexes are not allowed in, in those two zones. And those two zones make up the vast majority of the residential neighborhoods in the city.
So do you feel like you have enough information to come back to the council with a revised version?
Yeah.
Okay. And Charlie, how about for you?
Yeah, I think so. I didn't hear any comments on economic development, and that was pretty generically written, because I think council really wanted to have a focus group then here, hear more from some of the stakeholders and some businesses. And then I, I just inserted in there, develop an action plan, essentially, and we've come back to the council. I put some dates in there that are pretty early next year so that we could get an implementation on whatever that, whatever results from that effort. So I just wanted to make sure that looked like it was generally okay. And I simplified that to improve the city's economy. But what I want to do ultimately is have ways to measure these things. So we can look at tax revenues, we can look at a variety of different things to try to, so we can look at growth and business licenses, things like that. So we'll attach some metrics to this, but just want to make sure that was generally okay with council. We're not asking you to approve all this stuff tonight, just, just give us a general feedback. But look, okay, for now. Okay.
Very good.
That's great. Chief Tucker does have a quick insert.
Yeah, just a quick addition. Thanks for stepping in here real quick. Just to give you a status update, we have Officer Rachel Humbert off at Commercial Vehicle Enforcement School right now. And I know that's been a pretty positive thing for the city, city council, and I know you guys probably get a lot of feedback from your constituents on traffic and all that. We've got future goals. Well, when I say we have future goals, the police department has future goals.
I don't think, I don't think he's been, we haven't had that since they've come on.
No, so, but we've got some ideas. And Dan's got some goals of having a full-time traffic officer, and she's really going to probably fit that mold very well. So just a status update, she's at school right now and learning all the ropes, and she's got some field training to a state patrol after she gets back. But we should be seeing a traffic enforcement or commercial vehicle enforcement really soon, and we're looking forward to seeing her. If you haven't gotten to meet Officer Humbert yet, and we get a chance, you should. She's, she was a good catch. Thank you.
All right, so moving on to administrative reports, Charlie? Nothing?
Nothing at this point.
Okay. Moving on to council reports, Councilman Owen?
Thank you. I don't have much. I did have the opportunity to spend the evening with Frank the yesterday, and we didn't have any emergency calls, but I did get there right when a fire was just over and all the equipment came back. And I see how much work they have to do to get everything cleaned up and put back in shape. And they had a debrief, and I, I, I attended that, and it was, it was interesting. So I, I had a very good evening, and, and I really enjoyed being with Frank. He's a nice guy. He's easy guy to talk to, and I, I just really enjoyed it, and I'll certainly do it again down the road.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Good evening. To follow up on Chief Tucker's, as one of my constituent complaints that I am obligated to report was the speeding on Ferry Street, Reed Street, and State Street, as well as semis coming up and down the streets to avoid the roundabouts is what we can only assume. And feedback I've received from drivers I've actually spoken to. So just to add to that, so I'm, I'm happy to hear that there's somebody there at school and will be implicating that. And then I also wanted to just let everybody know that the Cedar Valley, Little League is going to be hosting a softball state tournament this weekend. The first game is at 12 o'clock on Saturday at Janicki Fields. And this will be a, a girls' softball tournament and full of very excited 10-year-olds playing their little hearts out. So if you have to some time and want to run over there and check it out, there will be approximately 10 teams over there playing.
Time and day again?
The tournament starts, the first game starts at noon on Saturday.
Thank you. Councilman Burns?
Just wanted to thank everybody who helped make our Fourth of July festivities possible. Greatly appreciated it, and it was wonderful to see how many people showed up for the parade. That was impressive. I was really happy to see the streets lined all the way through the route. So, and Chief Tucker for his interesting comments as he followed behind me last vehicle in the parade, telling everyone to disperse. Is there any expectation that we would be looking at a commercial vehicle scale, one of the portable scales that they take along, or would you just call the state police, and if you think that's an issue?
Now, the baseline, what they end up doing is they have the little mobile scales that they can carry cars. We already have a set of those from our last officer. I don't know functionality. I think they were hand-me-downs from State Patrol. But we also partner with the State Patrol, and we haul the trucks up or send them up and accompany them up, up to the scales for those that need it. And we also, if you ever see trucks parked down here after she gets started, there, that's usually where they put them out of service. And almost every day, Officer Eddie, when he did this, would put one out of service for equipment violations and all that. And it's not being nitpicky either. It's some pretty egregious stuff, missing tires, load shifting, logbooks that are so far out of whack that but we've got, we got all of that kind of planned. And I think that State Patrol had some work on virtual scales. I don't know how to put apps on my phone, so I don't know how virtual scales work either, but there's some measurement stuff that they can do for trucks up Highway 9 coming down, and I don't know how that works. But there's good partnerships that come out of these things with us and State Patrol.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kestee?
Okay, so recently I noticed that the staff were no longer giving their reports during our meetings. So I reached out to the mayor and Charlie, asking if they would reach out to each council member regarding this change and see if it's something they too had concerns with. My concerns regarding this change is the lack of transparency between the staff, the council, and the constituents. We will now have to reach out to staff individually with questions we may have and not hear what the other council members' questions were, potentially learning something we may not have thought of and opening it up for further discussion. It also makes it harder for the constituents to hear what's going on and doesn't let them in on the questions we've asked and the answers that are given. It's concerning to me that this was taken away without consulting the council on such a major part of our meetings. Since my question wasn't going to be asked, I'm asking the council how they feel and what they would like to see regarding in-person staff reports. If the majority like it and want to see it back, or if they are okay with this new way. Either way, I just think it's important to have this discussion, and I'd like to see it on the next meeting's agenda or potentially anytime that we can discuss it.
All right, Councilman Allen?
The only comment I have is I think tonight's meeting was probably one of the most fruitful ones I've been to in a long time. So anyway, thank you, council.
Councilman Lavaca?
Yeah, I think that the reports are important and they're valid because we're able to have that video or displayed for any of the constituents, or if they're here, if people in the city are here. They can hear it too, but also we can ask questions that maybe they're thinking of or whatnot. So it does add a lot of value to, to what we do and to their, to our purpose.
Councilman McGoffin? Are you there, Councilman McGoffin? You're muted? Doesn't it? Okay, moving on. Um, so the, I just have a couple of things. The first one is that I am putting together an arts committee. I've had a lot of interest in it, and that will be coming to you in the near future. And also a huge thank you to Bill Chambers, who was quite instrumental in helping me work through several, several problems with my computer. And usually, he's somebody who is never acknowledged, but I wanted to acknowledge him because he worked so hard. That's all I have, and we will move on to.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I apologize. I thought you were asking me about Joe Allen's statement about the, so I thought that was going down. So for Parks and Rec, if I may revisit that for a second?
Absolutely.
So I got a lot of great feedback from people downtown that I talked to, and a lot of great feedback about the parade, the rodeo, the Loga Rodeo. So a lot of excitement about seeing that back in action in the T-ball, or the T-ball, the Little League is really the talk of the town right now. So that's, that's exciting. Or from what I from what I hear from people that I work with and that I, that I talk to out there. So I'm looking forward to our next meeting, which I, is going to be on the 11th, and we're trying to get those spaced closer together so we have more opportunity to discuss those things that, that we talked about earlier. So, thank you.
Thank you. The one thing that I didn't hear, and I'm kind of surprised I didn't hear about it, is the safety report. Those of you, I think it was Chuck, Glenn, and Nick who met with the chiefs. Is there somebody who wants to give a report regarding that?
I believe Chuck's the chair on that one.
Did you want to give a report on that? The, the, the safety committee meeting that you had?
It was probably the best meeting I've ever been to. The chief and the ex-chief was there, and Frank, he fired you, so Ben and myself, and the, and Sarah Carter was sitting over in Florida and saying that. It was a good meeting. I, I enjoyed that meeting. Most of the meetings, I go through up there, I hate wait to get up and get out, but but I really enjoyed that, and some good information, and some good ideas, and and I'm sure more ideas are going to come out of that meeting. I hope we have another one before too. Yeah, I, I did. I enjoyed it. I have to say that that was probably the best meeting I've ever been to. Very, very good stuff.
All right, thank you. Did you two want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I really enjoyed it too. I think they have some things coming out that we'll be discussing in the next meeting. I'm not sure that they want to talk about quite yet, but yeah, it's, it's pretty informative and very informational, so.
And Mayor, if I could add just real quickly, the minutes for that, well, the person who took the minutes is lax in their adding them to the website, but they'll be up on the city website wherever they put those out. I just got to send it, well, that person has to send them to Serena. But you'll have those minutes for that meeting here, real quick. They're sitting on my desk.
Thank you. Um, yeah, that's one thing I want to encourage the council to do, is that when you do have these council committee meetings, really the reports that we put out, that's what it's supposed to be about, is your council committee meetings, and it's informing the council, the, of the information that was shared there. Because they are public meetings, so things can be shared. Whatever was shared there can be shared here. And that's kind of your role. And if we have not made that clear, I apologize, but just to let you know, that's what it's about. So when you're in that meeting, you may want to take notes so that you can report back if the meetings, if the meeting minutes are not out. Okay, thank you.
I'm kind of like, I know most people won't agree with me, but I like, I like to have a meeting. I don't like to go to a meeting and come straight to council. I like to have a meeting on an off day, and I, I'm just more relaxed.
Okay.
And I hope the next meeting we have, we can, we can work that way.
Okay.
I, I don't know whether the other gentleman will agree or not, but, but I, I felt more relaxed and I'm not waiting and online and come down here to the council. So I'd much rather have it on an off day. It ain't gonna hurt us to come down, take an hour out of the day, and, or in the evening, and have our meetings. I, I don't know, you guys probably don't agree, but that's the way I feel about it.
I, I believe with me, with Parks and Rec, it's the frequency. So I've only had one meeting this year. I've pushed for more, but, and then I haven't had the minutes released online. Yeah, I know they're working on that, which is great. But frequency and the ability to get that information, I think, as far as time, Chuck, I'm available.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm moving on to public comment. So it is 6:44. I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Give your name and your address when you start your talk. And I will begin here first with anybody in the chambers. Is there anybody here in the chamber who has a public comment they want to make? All right, not seeing anybody. I will go online. Is there anybody online on Zoom right now who would like to make public comment? Okay, I don't see anybody unmuting. Okay, so I will close public comment at this point. We do not have any unfinished business that we are working with tonight, but we do have new business. And it is the Amendment 8 to the Professional Services Agreement, 2018 PS25 with Pacific Landscape Architect. And usually that would be Mark, but are you going to do that, Charlie, or?
It's a great question. I, I expected we'd probably have somebody from Public Works here. So happy to take any questions down and take them back to Public Works.
So I had a question on that one. So the Memorial Park increase is $38,000 on a, bringing it to 107,000. So we're increasing it by 50%. And I know that there's a lot that goes into the park. And maybe I just don't understand enough of it, but that's almost 2,000 hours of a full year, and somebody just nonstop working on that project, getting paid $110,000, $110 an hour. So it just seems like a lot. I know that permits cost a lot, stormwater sampling, stormwater assessments, consultants, all that cost. But it just seems like a lot. A big increase that's unexpected.
Yeah, so this is, this is something that I think was Mark looking for a vote. Definitely, we'll need to wait because it sounds like there's not answers to questions.
Maybe the council already, or it's not a question for the council, or they have more information on it than I do. I don't know.
No, it would have to come out of Public Works, and Mark is on vacation. So he wouldn't have been here tonight. So we'll table this, I guess, until the next meeting. Moving on to executive session. So at this point, I am going to close this session. We'll move into executive session. How long do you think we will need tonight? Nikki, Charlie?
I'd say start with 15 minutes.
Okay, just a few minutes, okay.
No, no, 15. Start with 15.
15 minutes, okay. All right. All right, we will do that, and we will come back and reopen this session after we have completed executive session. Thank you.